I'd like to call it Adams County Board Supervisor meeting at 9:09 a.m. I'll start with asking Mr. Grant to give us an invitation.
That is all I'm saying. That's about it. Dear the Father, we thank your blessings this morning of God for allowing us to see another day. And Father, we just ask you right now, Lord, our continued, bless each and every one of those, uh, touched by our leaders. Father, continue to give them the wisdom to keep protecting them, oh God. And Father, we just ask for peace across this country, across this state, across this city and this county, oh God. Father, continue to bless our first responders, our doctors, all our nurses and our schools, oh God, keep them safe. And Father, we just ask for peace to continue throughout this county. We ask you in the precious name of Jesus' name to pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to do a round call of the officers, supervisor Gray here, supervisor Hutchins,
here.
Supervisor Milton present, supervisor Wilson here, Deputy Kirk Paige Dean,
present.
Chancellor Kirk, Brandon Lewis,
present.
Attorney Scott Slough, present. And I am present. Can I get a motion to approve the document?
Some of them.
It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins. It's been properly seconded by supervisor Wilson. Are there any discussion? There be no discussion, all vote by using sign of "I." "I" in a opposed may have the same right. Do we have any special presentation? Any special presentation? County meeting, David Breed, Attorney.
Mr. Breeders, I would say.
City of government. In the city of government. No. All right, let's move to departmental reports.
Good morning. Oh, sorry. Oh, good morning, board. How's everyone today?
Good.
Good. I'm back from my surgery and I just want to let everybody know we were successful, over success. Uh, I feel a whole lot better than that after that. Uh, I feel like I was lacking oxygen and it feels so great to feel very good. And with that being said, I have something I want to present to you all today. Uh, my assistant, Ellen Smith, has notified me that he is seeking other important opportunities. He doesn't want to go, but I understand that times are getting hard. This is unfortunate because he was a great act resource to support the county. So, I've come to you today to request an increase in pay for my assistant as a counter offer by matching pay. Do note that this raise can come from amendment in the budget, so there can, so there will be no increase in budget. Uh, I would like to reiterate that the skills and experience that he has acquired in his time here has been a great asset to the county. Because when I was out doing my illness and surgery, he has done a great job keeping his system running. Having someone dependable as him is hard to find and training someone like you is even harder. I conclude with saying that the matching offer is raising from $12.60 to $15.86 an hour. This is my request. Thank you.
What's his pay? What is his pay?
Uh, his pay was $12.60 an hour.
Have you heard his request? What's the board?
I'm gonna say what I always say, Mr. President. Uh, we, he's gonna deal with the budget in the next couple of months and, and, and I just think it needs to be brought then.
All right, well, I think he, he's in here, I do know he's in here to go to youth court, uh, youth court, youth court. I got an application here for a new hire on the youth court, so, uh, it's just gonna,
What is?
Uh, he's gonna leave here, he's going to youth court if he don't,
He's gonna stay accounting for it.
Uh, yeah, he's there accounting for you, but he's moving to youth court if he don't get this. So, I just, I just wanted to make sure you know that. I, I'm gonna sit Friday looking through my folder, looking at what I had, and he's in there, uh, for headed to youth court.
I, I understand what you're saying. I don't want to lose anybody, Mr. President. But what if all the employees come in here and say that they headed somewhere else? Can we afford to just gonna give them all the raise? Only thing I'm saying is, I, I, I think $12.60 is too low for what he's doing and his supervisors say how valuable he is, but when, when you, when you adopt the budget and, and you deviate from the budget, you overpay the warrants because every employee in this county is underpaid. And I thought when we got that, uh, Kiffins and Hangers or whatever that money was, we was gonna address the entire county still one by one. That's my point. That's what I had to say.
Yes, sir.
President Yang.
Yes, yes, supervisor.
And don't get me wrong, I agree with supervisors of great. But I know we have data for other departments with no budget increase. You said there's no budget increase in this?
Correct.
And so there is money in the?
Yes, as, uh, as far as I can amend the budget from other budgets.
And to have an IT person making $12.60 is unheard of as an assistant. Uh, I'm pretty sure that's about $26,000.
Yeah.
The budget's $26,000.
$26,000.
You have a chance to look at it, you have a chance.
Yeah, so I'm just about there.
I have not. I mean, I do, I have his budget pulled up. Brandon, did you have a specific line item we need to pull up extra from?
Um, I don't know the numbers, I have a bunch of my head, but it is, uh, I plan on pulling some furniture through the process
Okay.
and, uh, contract services.
Okay.
Presenting somebody else.
And what'd you ask for? Fifteen what?
Uh, fifteen eighty-six an hour.
Eighty-six?
Yes.
Did they go through the process that we have in place? Like, anybody else had to go through?
Yes, well, yes, why I just asked, uh, Chancellor Kirk and, uh, acting administrator, Ms. Lewis had they went through, and she said she hadn't had time. Uh, she hadn't looked, she hadn't looked at it yet.
No. Brandon, so I can send you a copy of the form, then generally what happens is if you're requesting an amendment or to change, to make a modification in your budget, then Scott and I will meet, we will kind of make sure that, you know, we can shift things around, um, look at, you know, just you have to look at fringe too, with your given the raises, it won't just be the salary and everything. So, we'd be happy to meet with you this week if you'd like to go over that.
Okay, definitely.
Uh, Mr. President.
I can either.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lewis.
Grant.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know if Brandon was here.
That's right.
When we put their new, uh, process in place, we got a new process that this board put in place to deal with raises. So, I'm not against your individual getting a raise, but you need to follow the process.
I understand.
I, I thank you, Kane, because it's gonna, uh, when, I don't know, but he got it, we definitely gotta get a check, but it's gonna come down to acting. But when it gets down to new hires, he's, uh, applying for this job over here, so we'll have to make a decision here today, because he's in his folder for a new hire for just, I mean, for youth.
Mr. President, we could print a form and, uh,
Okay.
keep me to fill it out and then have it before the next.
That'll work. All right.
Have it by the end of the meeting, by the end of the meeting.
Probably won't take Brandon that long to be doing.
I can, I can only print mine, but I can send it to you.
We're gonna print out a form for you and just go fill it out and process it.
All right, uh, Ms. Johnson.
Good morning. Um, I'm Ms. Warren. I decided to come in with the judges' table conference April,
Um, I got one of the judges' conference, I see Ms. Maddow here, April the 11th through the 14th.
Okay.
And I got,
But, yeah, this for both judges and I have.
One for May the 17th through May the 19th.
Right. And about my tent.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Uh, we got, we got, we got, we got, uh, do a motion to approve it first. Hold on just a minute. All right, we have, uh, travel, uh, Ms. Vernon just requested a travel to the, uh, conference, the spring conference, uh, in Belux, Mississippi. It's from May the 17th through May the 19th. Can I get a motion?
I need a motion to approve travel to the conference, May the 17th.
Seventeen through the 19th. It's been properly moved by supervisor Gray and properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins by their end discussion. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried. Okay, you can move forward now.
Okay. Uh, I got a call from my prospect, uh, temp, and they will be unable to work season up for me, so, whatever y'all decide to do. But do keep in mind, I do have one employee on every month, like, and one still trying, uh, next door.
Do you know anyone else that you can get seasonal working?
I do, but I don't know if they're, they're doing it, because they weren't seasonal before.
Is this, this is someone to fill you for the FPLs?
And also, you got, you're training somebody else, so she's almost kind of down one and a half instead of, instead of one.
You'll have to be the one to find someone.
I mean, I can also. And then just will pull it back or just, the next morning?
Uh, she needs to go ahead and get somebody's name, so can you?
That's what we say, we need to go ahead and pull it, and then you can follow, yeah, follow up with the name and everything.
Would you see, would you see, make sure we approve their name and salary once they're accepted it, before they go themselves?
Okay. I make a motion pending the hiring attempt.
All right, um, they made, made a motion, the motion is, uh, made by supervisor Hutchins to, uh, accrue the hiring attempt, it was seconded by supervisor Wilson, uh, by the end of discussion. There be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried.
So, will the judges approve their training?
We hadn't, we hadn't did judge travel yet, that's what I was getting straight. We can go ahead, since there's, there, we have Judge Ogilvy and Judge Moore, they're going to the, uh, judges' conference April the 11th, uh, April the, April the 12th through the 14th. Can I get a motion to approve both judges?
Some of them.
It's been properly moved by, uh, supervisor Hutchins. Second. Can I get it properly seconded by supervisor Wilson? By the end of discussion. I mean, supervisor Gray, by the end of discussion. No discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried now. All right. Thank you. Next departmental report.
Good morning. My name is Denise Feist and I'm a purchase clerk for Adams County.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I would like to spread procurement card and shop card off the next floor.
You heard the request of the purchase clerk taking a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Wilson and properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins. Are there any discussion? Is there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right.
Okay, I spoke with the state attorney today and, I mean, and he informed us that it's best to combine quotes for the uplifting on the, um, ACSO vehicles in case a bid will come in at the same time. So, I'd like to ask for permission to advertise for bids.
Uh, you heard the request of the purchase clerk? Can I get a motion?
Some of them.
It's been properly moved by supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by supervisor Gray to advertise the bid. Uh, is there be any discussion? Is there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried now.
Okay. Um, I just want to go that we did receive one quote for the resurfacing of the basketball court in La Grange, and it's over $5,000, and we are waiting on the second quote.
All right.
We gotta have two quotes when it's over $5,000.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you. No, sorry. We have three questions, you know, just waiting on the second quote.
Waiting on the second quote. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
All right, departmental report, next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Request a beckoning session for the medical department concerning personnel, not the one that been emailed to this, to the county administrator and a, and a jail update.
Okay. All right. Departmental report, next.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Spencer Stuveson, Adams County, uh, antenna and power processor, have two requests today for our consideration. First, T-Mobile requests a permit to place additional equipment on an existing American Power Corporation tower site located at 733 Highway 61 South. The project will include replacement of six antennas, six remote radio units and associated equipment, and the removal of three antennas and three remote radio units and associated equipment. The replacement of this additional equipment will improve T-Mobile service along Highway 61 South and portions of southern Adams County. Orderments requirements have been met, and fees have been paid, and request the board to approve this T-Mobile permit application.
All right, you heard the request of Mr. Stuveson. Uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton and properly seconded by supervisor Wilson. Uh, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, uh, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried.
Second request here is from AT&amp;T Mobility. Uh, and they request a permit to place additional equipment on an existing Crown Tower, Crown Castle Corporation tower located at 26th and John Fisher Parkway. The project will include replacement of nine antennas, six remote radio units and associated equipment, removal of nine antennas, three remote radio units, and six tower mounted amplifiers and associated equipment. Replacement of this additional equipment will improve AT&amp;T service in southern, in south part of Natchez and in the Cloverdale area. Orders and requirements have been met and fees have been paid, and request the board to approve this AT&amp;T mobility permit application.
You heard the, uh, request of Mr. Stuveson. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton.
Second.
It's been properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins. Are there any discussion? If there be no discussion, all vote in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried now.
Anybody have any other questions or anything?
Board, anybody have any question? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stuveson. Next.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I got three things this morning, uh, you heard about, uh, we did, was able to take the, uh, site rundown and close there, so we're gonna be working on that before, so hopefully we get it. I'll put back up probably Wednesday, Thursday.
Look, Brad, scratch something off my list.
Yeah, I got you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, tell, tell, tell the lady that called you that she gonna see the trucks out there Wednesday, Thursday, and she watched us all day, they took it down.
What the lady that called?
Yeah, okay. Uh, next thing, I got, uh, our department preparedness, uh, uh, weather conference is in Belux, May 16th to the 19th. I would ask one of my supervisors to please attend this conference, uh, if y'all can. Uh, I sent Corvett the information. I would love to have one of you guys, some ladies, there at that conference. They gonna be May the 16th to the 19th in Belux.
May 16th through 19th. You heard it?
I tell you what I do, uh, I'll let you know, because another conference that, that I might be canceling out on, and I might ain't gonna go to this.
I know I won't be, I know I won't be going. I bet.
Could I get an approved pending?
Yes. Uh, you heard, uh, can I get a motion, uh?
Some of them.
It, it's pending that, uh,
Pending on me finding out whether I'm going to the other conferences or not. I'm just gonna switch them out.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Hold on, hold on, wait a second, motion.
Second.
It's second. All right, uh, and end of discussion. Be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right.
Okay.
What was the name of it again?
It's the partners and preparedness, uh,
Partners and preparedness. All right, you got it?
Uh, the next thing is, uh, Mr. Scott Irving, uh, has terminated his contract, uh, with the Adams County Emergency Management Agency, so he's no longer working, uh, as a contractor for, uh, my department. Uh, with that being said, uh, I was able to obtain some more grant money. Uh, with that, I want to bring on, uh, Ms. Billy Humphries as our rep, uh, administrative person. Uh, that's what I brand up, so she gonna be working on our brand up paperwork, documentation and stuff like that. Uh, so I was able to secure some money for her from the, uh, state of Mississippi. And I have a contract here, it's got same one as, uh, the other two, they same, no benefits and nothing like that. Uh, an amount of $250 per month, just for the administrative side and documentation on that.
Yes, so find that the previous contract with Scotty is terminated, or is it out this moment, please?
Right.
All right, you heard the request of the emergency management.
Second.
Second.
How do you do?
It's been properly moved, and proper, uh, by supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by supervisor Gray. And, um, will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right.
That's all I have for your question from the supervisor.
Keep up the good work.
Throw a goodie.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
I have a travel request for Billy Humphries to, uh, when we down emergency management conference in Lake Charles, uh, should be getting hazmat trained and hotel, uh, registration and bills, it'll cost me $1,227.97. And that's May the 8th through the 11th.
May the 8th through 11th? All right, y'all do have, do I have the paperwork that you have? All right, you heard the request, uh, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Wilson. It's been properly seconded by supervisor Hutchins. Will that be any discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. Is it in budget? You have funding in the budget?
All right, and be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried now.
All right, uh, they look for some support with the supervisors, uh, we, now, this time of year, people burn bills off and doing, they, they call control burners. But we're trying to suggest that if they gonna do any kind of control burn, want, they should be there, you know, to watch it. If something happen, they can be put it out, or if they have a line cut around, you know, where it probably won't get out of hand. But what we're looking at as far as volunteers and also the natural fire department, uh, we've been having a couple of them, they've been burning at night. And that's kind of hard on the firemen, because they can't see where, you know, where they walking or anything like that. Especially if you got cuts around, because you know, you don't know what's on the cussing. So, we just trying to suggest that if you gonna do a control burn, do it between sunup and sundown, you know, and try, try to have it out before, before darkness come. Like I said, we don't want anybody to get hurt, fall off and over and things like that, because it all happened about a month ago. So, you know, just want y'all support on that, and, and like I said, they do do a control burn, well, the wind's 25 and 10 miles an hour, but anything other than that, it's gonna get away to me.
All right.
So, just need y'all's support on that, and, uh, you know, if anything, come up, and also call 911 if you gonna do a control burn. And let them know your name, address, and phone number, so we have an idea where it's at.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Departmental report.
NFS Adams County, we now want this paid. I have a report from March the 1st and March the 20th on the number of calls that we have. National PD has 692, Adams County SO has 327, the fire department had 22 with 12 being in the county. Um, oh, he slipped down. Um, also, I want to remind everybody too, on April the 9th through August the 15th, we have the National Public Safety telecommunication.
All right. Thank you. Departmental report.
Morning. Mary Edordy, Adams County Court. I have, um, written this grant for two, it's a coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. It's for $10,000 to help, uh, youth court and detention center with, uh, COVID cleaning supplies. So, it's written, place for each sign, get approved it.
All right.
It's to the Department of Public Safety and Planning, we already have a grant for it.
Okay. Just sign, I need a motion. I need a motion. I need, uh, can I get a motion to sign it, uh, granted, that properly moved by, um, supervisor Gray, and it's taken, taken by supervisor, uh, Wilson. A bit in the discussion. If be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of "I." In a opposed, may have the same right. Got the travel here, we're looking.
I have travel and I also have three new hires in the, in your folder.
Well, we gonna do the travel while you're there, because we gonna get on a new hire.
That was for the last grant that?
That, that, uh, she had, she drove to Jackson, uh, get approval for her travel, uh, okay. All right.
Good.
Okay, we good.
That's all right.
Well, hey, let me do that. Let's, we can do this. Let me go and take care of these new hires, because most of them, long lead.
Three of them.
Give a lot of attention, we're not banks. I know this is a, pay rate changes, $12.57?
Yeah, that's downstairs, that's, uh, I'm not familiar with it, but I can represent it.
So, this Chris Stuveson, your administrative assistant, is this one of yours?
She's in the boy downstairs. It must be something that, I'm not his, I don't know, I haven't seen it though, it didn't come through me.
Jane Evans, attention officer, that's not through you either?
He didn't put any of these through me. Can I look them over first?
Well, we just doing,
Okay.
Casa Director, that's through.
That's me.
Okay. Uh, Comitia, Fran Woods, Guns, uh, new hire for the Casa Director, hours rated 16, 14. Uh, Comethia, uh, Fran Woods Guns, uh, new hire for the Casa Director, average rate sixteen fourteen. So.
That's to replace, um, Angela James, position Casa, she went by Fran. Clementa?
Comethia. Comethia Fran Woods, Comethia Woods Guns.
She, uh, in years?
Yes.
Yes. Can I get a motion?
So move.
They're properly moved by supervisor Gray. Proper second by supervisor Wilson, in the discussion. There be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. May they have the same right, motion carried now. Alright, you got. T F L? Uh, new hire, T F L, Adams County Family Drug Court Case Manager, um, average rate fifteen eighty-six, and now, can I get a motion? They're properly moved by supervisor Wilson. Proper second by supervisor Milton, and in the discussion, if be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. In a pose, may they have the same right. Alright, we have, uh, Edwin B. Smith, this is the.
Yes.
So this is the same thing with Brandon, uh, that Brandon was asking for, so, know where we gonna go, but he, he's in the youth court for fifteen, sixteen hours. So y'all gonna wait and.
We have to see if he's gonna stay.
Should I just Brandon, or you gonna, or we gonna go and prove and move forward?
Yeah, what, what position is it for?
For the, uh, drug, youth drug court case manager.
Probably easier to fill your, that position.
I have had so much turnover in that position lately.
Alright.
I guess we gonna wait on that one.
Guess we gonna wait on it.
Can it be approved if he decides to?
I think we need to.
Do I have that?
He can do whatever he wants.
Cause I was trying to get him to start Wednesday. He's already done it two weeks notice.
I move that we approve it pending the decision we make on his job over here with Brandon.
Alright, it's been properly moved by supervisor Gray. Alright, now the discussion.
Yeah, since he's already on, this is almost similar to a raise or whatever it is, so, if he started to work on Wednesday without more approval, it would, it wouldn't be the worst thing that, that's happened before in the past. But, uh, y'all can go ahead and approve it, no, no reason not to give him the motion.
Alright, and no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. In a pose, may they have the same right.
That's all I have, thank you.
Do you want these together? Do you want those other things?
Yeah, from Bouchelle, right?
Is it something in his budget? Yes, I mean, if he says he needs.
He's ready, he'd be up there.
Come on with, Mr. Uh.
Good morning, boy.
Mr. Jason.
Yes, sir, I'm Jake with the City Service, I have one thing today, um, the Adams County Master Garden are having their annual plant sale on Saturday, April first at Colleen National Campus. It's gonna be from eight o'clock to, uh, twelve P M, on that day, they have hanging baskets for ten dollars, and the rest of them be five dollars. All the plants they sell are gonna be, um, native plants they grow in the grand house also, their households, it's gonna be April first. Listen, fly report bits from April first to, uh, first Saturday of next month, from eight to five, I come early, last year, we sold out within three hours, people come there at seven thirty in the morning, five, but, um, we started April, please come early, turn up and have the plants.
Alright, thank you, anything else?
Uh, that was it.
Alright, but we appreciate it, appreciate the bringing in.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jason. I just wanna, uh, give you a little shout out for, uh, everything you doing for, uh, the kids and, uh, youth leadership. We did go to Jackson and to the Capitol to, uh, the mayor's youth council, uh, end up going with us this time, and I think it was a success, successful trip, and the kids really enjoyed theyself, and the mayor really put it on the show. It was a good day.
Alright, thank you, Jason, thank you, Jason.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
Um, don't really have much, just wanna give you update on Morgan County Road. Uh, phase one drawn, specs are scheduled to be delivered, we submitted to M D O on Wednesday of this week. Um, I have not heard anything back about it right away, information that we submitted a few weeks back, I'm, I will reach out to, um, M D O to hear about that when I submit these drawings to them. And, um, the regulations to phase two will begin to be on Friday, I'm gonna look over them today, then I'll get back to the office. And then we will schedule a meeting with, uh, Mr. Marlowe for J K S, so that we can go with the reasons to the plans, and get his, get his stamp and signature at a well as time. And then we'll be getting ready to, we would advertise that project, um, sooner than we, sooner than we previously anticipated. That's pretty much it for Morgan County Road, um, E W P for, uh, Magnolia Bluff, two hundred thirty, Nathan Heights, um, we submitted the, uh, easements to Mr. Slowrun last week. Um, drones are ready, so once we get those, we'll be ready for construction for those, we'll advertise the construction of those as well. And, um, today at ten o'clock, uh, we have a bid opening for the striped only project for Liberty Road, Cranfield Road, and, uh, North House.
Yeah, and those are all temporary E W P easements, and that makes it a lot easier for us to get them a lot faster, but, but regulations are a lot less on, on temporary, so. We'll get them out and shake them down for further permission.
I got a question for you.
I got something I wanna give you. It's, uh, if you want speed bump on, on, on Noah Road.
Yes.
There's not many residents on there, so let me sign it, I think that's enough, I need you to look, look at, see if you, uh, feel a need, wonder where they need to be.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
If not, I'll see you guys in the temple.
D A team. D A team, thank you. Alright, next.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
Just have a few things for you this morning, uh, the first thing is, you know, we still keeping some of our inmates up there in Jersey County for safety reasons. Because I need to transfer five thousand from zero zero one dash two two zero dash four seven five two zero zero one dash two two zero dash five A one in order to, to pay for the housing of those inmates up there in Jersey County.
I've got that included in our little form that we sent over.
Okay. They gotta take care of all that here?
We got our own form, you get a couple of things, he needs to put it over.
Okay, the other thing is, we've been dealing with D U Q for eight years now, the rest of the tank that we have in the ground over there at the sheriff's office. Um, and they're telling us they, they are not extending anything any further when it comes to this tank being in the ground, that we're gonna have to get it dug up. And they said that the county probably has a fifteen, uh, hundred gallon tank somewhere that we could possibly use to store diesel in. And the purpose of this is to make sure that our generator stays running, that's what that tank is being utilized for. So I'm needing the boys' help and assistance in dealing with D U Q and getting this tank situation taken care of. They telling us they not giving us another extension.
Okay, you got a fuel tank buried over here?
We didn't.
And it?
We got two, we have.
And it's leaking?
No, uh, they want us to put a leak detection on, and I told them that we were in, I've been telling them for the last few years that we've tried to get another building. So I didn't want us to have to dig that tank up, so it's, it's come down to it to where they've called our hand on it. And they said, put a above ground tank, hook it up to that, and we'll be fine, so, that's what.
They're talking about dig that one up, fill the thing up?
He said we could leak, if we take the product out of it, and put it in the other above ground tank, that they, that they will be fine with that.
Okay. Y'all need, so y'all need a fifteen hundred gallon above?
Right.
Who, who do we buying fuel fro, from?
Uh, we normally buy from county.
They, they won't supply you with a fuel tank?
I can call, I, I, you know, I was gonna say if the county had one that y'all are not using, before we did something.
Yeah, D U Q, for some reason, they thought you all had one that you all wanted to utilize, and that's why we asked you all first.
I think it's one out of, uh, District Three.
I'm worried they got some laws to have in one, and that's why we asked for it. Before we.
Okay, one way or the other, we, I think we get that thing care of.
Yeah, okay.
Scott, you need to move forward on asking the board about the issue, so just move forward on the purchase of the building, or has something to do with that?
Pull out somebody's, uh, can you do it?
That will ride?
What's that?
Okay, I'm sorry. What do you need? I mean, you have, you have the, the first, for the show, demo support?
I'll, I'll get, uh, I'll get John at the seventy-two, and also, we've got a quote for the door replacement on the first.
Move on. We'll give a person on that then, next thing is, I wanted to make sure I invite you all myself to, uh, the Adams County Sheriff's earlier, you know, it's the first one we have, we've had three years. April twenty eighth, twenty ninth, let's see you all spaces on the, on the grounds out there, you know, we're gonna be under Chief Brad here, and I know all of y'all have had a relationship with Chief Brad over the years. So I, I hope you all can make it, the other thing I wanna make the board aware of this, the next weekend is Relate to Life. I don't know if you all wanna participate in that, but it'll be across the river, that kicking to relate your life back out, and that'll be made a film. And the last thing I have is mayor's very purpose, apparently they gonna, apparently they gonna be doing this at the, uh, Mathis Middle School, they're gonna have a huge parent's meeting in April fifteenth over there. And that's all I have for today, keep it simple, Scott.
Alright, well Sheriff, we thank you, one, one question I have for you, now, I didn't get, well, I know you probably don't know, but if you would check on the, uh, project and all the cameras that we talked about, I, I don't know, uh, for the brown, ballpark that we had, I did talk, well, you, I didn't talk, you gotta talk to, to Randy Frank Smith about it. And, uh, they was trying to come up with something about wifi, which one they'll put in, but, uh, just wanna keep going, cause we doing upgrades out there, and I definitely need your camera there.
I, I definitely get you a, I definitely get you an upgrade on that, because we have been keeping in contact with them, and I think right now, their, their probably have more project build cameras than anybody right now.
Yeah, well, we, we actually doing, we, we are actually doing, uh, an upgrade to that, uh, ballpark, we, we doing major upgrades, and, uh, so, you know, we just wanted to make sure we keep our property safe and, you know, keep people safe.
And I'm gonna tell you this, I have been getting feedback from people out there, and they're glad to see the cameras going up.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not negative attention, you know, that community is a great community, it just gets a black eye sometime for a few bad apples. But the people have been extremely receptive of the cameras going up, especially the older community out there, and they're glad to see it happening. So, I just wanna commend the board here for doing this, because I told y'all before, and I'm saying again, I like the first county period that has taken on Project Noah. Everywhere else you see these smart cities, there are smart cities popping up, but you all are being a smart county by taking league and jumping on out there and doing it, so. I know for one, we're very appreciative of the sheriff's office, so I'm gonna thank y'all for that now. Only other thing I asked is y'all to help us get some cameras on the outside of courthouse.
Alright.
Do you have cost on that?
Yep.
I actually asked for it a couple of years ago, and it got approved, but I think we switched I T guys and things, and it never happened, but at the time, it was like sixty-five hundred maybe. But I, I need y'all to, I need y'all to look at it, and let us put some cameras on the outside.
You talking about Noah or something else?
Not just regular security cameras, cause the courthouse has security cameras in, but with all the judges and the boys and, and, and the patrons who come in here every day, we really need to have them around for liability purposes. Not just security, but liability with steps and everything, so, it doesn't have to be a super expensive system, but I definitely would love to have the board step on getting that done, especially seeing what's happened over the years and things, the climates are changing with the type of people that are going to court now, we need that to add, so.
Alright, uh, supervisor Milton had something to say?
Uh, Sheriff, where are we at right now, uh, as far as swapping frequencies with the police department?
We continue to request, and continue to request, and continue to request, and it has not happened yet.
But they do have the count as correct.
We sent ours the day I told you all in the paper that I was sending. We sent ours two months ago.
They were sent the following day, supervisor Milton, to, uh, chief, and she did receive, uh, talk.
And let me be clear, I'm not blaming the chief.
No, no, no.
She's been busy, I don't know how far that has to go up, but I know we sent it two months ago.
I mean, I have had conversations with them over there, I'm just wanting to see if anything happens since my conversation. Thank you.
I do wanna ask one question for Scott though, I know I was out there meeting with the last, uh, in reference to when the Project Noah call in about the city grant. Is that moving forward, or is that dead and worn with, with those cameras?
According to talking to Noble and them, they said they've got somebody on it now, that they'll, they're on the same page, that's what I was told, so.
I'm just asking, cause those are cameras that are paid for and, and you be put up.
Pouring the water, but you can't make them drink it.
Alright, Sheriff, Jeffy and I have another question.
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna make a motion that we gone on family money necessary to put up these cameras over at the courthouse for, uh, the protection and pending the county administration's face to find them, but I'm gonna make the motion.
Uh, you, you heard supervisor Gray, is the motion, can I get a second, it's been properly moved by supervisor Gray and properly seconded by, uh, supervisor Milton, uh, will that be in the discussion? Yes.
Uh, so we talking about now yet, you did?
Well, we looked them up a couple of years ago, they was sixty-five hundred, uh, all ones. But we can, they're cheaper now, they may be cheaper now, so.
Pending, uh, get a couple bids over there.
I'm sure they, they may be cheaper now, because they all just changed, so, but I, I definitely appreciate you going on and doing that supervisor Gray and board, because that, that needs to happen like that, so, thank you.
Alright. Alright. That, Mr. Upshaw, I seen you just come in, I had you, I had you a thank you, for your new hire, did you get him back?
Uh, not yet. Um, I've got one more thing to add.
He said he had something else.
Alright, what you, what you got, Mr. Upshaw?
I have, uh, one of my supervisors left and went to the prison on eighty-four.
Yes, sir.
So I'm promoting one of my regular officers to that position, so it's not gonna cost any more for the county, just be move, move one person from a lower rank to a higher rank.
Alright, but, uh.
I, I do have that paperwork right here.
And you have it signed by you or he saw?
Uh, no, I don't.
It need to be.
It's a, you can approve or round, we just don't want him to start work without being on payroll, that.
Right, he already on payroll.
Right, he's on payroll already.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, it's not effective until a couple of days, so there's enough time to defer sign and all that.
And I need to, yeah.
Alright, now you heard the, uh, request, what's the name?
Uh, Grant Art Banks.
And they going from what to what?
They going from a lower ranking position to, to replace one of my supervisors, they went out to eighty-four.
At what house?
What price?
Twelve fifty-seven.
Alright, is twelve fifty-seven a dollar?
I sent it to her, I just wanna make sure that it did go through.
It's going from twelve fifty-seven to?
No, that's where you get it.
That's what it's going to.
It comes in my phone, so.
It's in there too.
The, uh, I, I mean, it was in my phone, so she took it for, look at.
I sent it late. Last week, so I'm just trying to make sure.
No, it was here, but, uh, Mayor Kay hadn't looked over it, and I said she needed to look over for the budget when she was here, so she got, she got all the new hires, we had about three in here.
Yeah, okay, I had, had two new, two new hires.
Two new hires and one ready.
One promotion.
Yeah, it was in here, so, if you would give it, Mayor Kay, can we move, we're sending a bid open, so we can get, uh.
I need, I need the three, I need the three.
Mr. President, one question, like before ten o'clock. If you, uh, promote him to twelve fifty-seven, what was he making for that?
Uh, he was making, uh, I can't, I can't remember exactly what the, lower twelve, twelve, thirty, twelve.
Twelve, twelve or something like that.
Something, something like that.
Thank you. You, you, you won't be hat pulling over him either?
Nope, so we got to what we got to.
Budget time coming, you need it.
Okay.
Yeah, I already sent some emails, uh, about. Yeah, alright, we, we, we'll, we'll get that. Yeah, alright, we'll, we'll, we'll get that paperwork back and we'll get it taken care of, alright, appreciate it. Alright, it's nine fifty, nine, say ten AM, ready for bid open. Bid opens on the Strikers Project, uh.
Gotta wait till ten o'clock?
Alright, that is.
Alright, it's ten o'clock now. We're gonna open bids on SAP zero one nine and the whole M. Uh, this, uh, estimate on this job is two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, zero cents. Two sixty-three, eight sixteen. We have two bidders, uh, the first one we're opening is Lane Line LLC of Flowing, Mississippi. Certificate of Responsibility is seventeen four seven four. Their bid bond is with Travelers Casualty Insurance. It is four five percent of the bid. And it appears to be in order. EB's certification is filled out and signed. The affidavits are filled out and signed. Their bid is two fifty-eight, eight ninety-seven, eighty-eight. Two fifty-eight, eight ninety-seven, eighty-eight. Next bidder is Traffic Control Products of Randy, Mississippi. Certificate of Responsibility is zero six zero seven nine. Their bid bond is with Travelers Casualty Insurance, it is four five percent of the bid. And it appears to be in order. Proposal is signed, EB's certification is filled out and signed. The affidavits filled out and signed. Their bid is two ninety-four, seven seven one ninety-five. Two ninety-four, seven seven one ninety-five. Y'all will take these under advisement, I'll go check them and we'll go from there.
Alright, motion.
Thank you.
Take, take them under advisement.
Sir.
Through by Supervisor Hudson and second by Supervisor Milton, to take them under your advisement. Any discussion? All, all in favor? Push the pass.
Alright.
Mr. Gaines is back.
Alright, uh, Mr. Larry, I think you got bid open.
What we're doing is we're opening proposals for, we, last time I was here, we talked about potentially doing CDBG projects and we're in Gators area for drainage improvements. What was the name of that neighborhood again?
Uh, Bluegrass, uh, suburb bid.
Okay. CDBG is wired, now I have an engineer on record, but it does require federal requirements for us to advertise and score and choose an engineer for this specific CDBG project. So anyway, we advertise, um, let me pass out these scores first. I think y'all are familiar with some of these proposals we received. These are just instructions on the back, this. I think some of y'all have done this a time or two. This is, uh, let's see, the first one is cornerstone engineering. We sent five proposals here. I wanna check these out, up you go. The next one is JKS, George Kastner and Simmons. About a meter of dim, I'll still hand these out. I'm not sure I sent five. And this last one. Yes, IMS. That's George, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's got one here, I'll just, y'all can agree with him too, so. So all requires us to do?
Yes, sir.
I just figured you was gonna. I figured, I figured you was gonna just make a shot in the trash when you were there. But it didn't matter, I thought you just made a blind shot.
So yeah, use the right hand of the thumb in the left-hand column and then just score those according by qualifications, experience and capacity. And then tally them up at the end, uh, whoever got scored the highest is, sure you choose the CDBG project. And then I'll get with that engineer afterwards and, uh, and, and warn, we'll go out to the site at some point. Hey, you said you're going out of town, I got like going out of town.
Yeah.
This, yeah. Maybe next week.
Okay.
So he can, he or she can get an idea of what the project is.
Okay.
If they ever discover work of maps.
Yeah.
Unless you want to go out this afternoon?
Huh?
We go this afternoon, forty-eight?
Yeah. We probably can, we can do that.
How about that? I'll say this is clear this afternoon, so.
Oh, he's in town.
Cause this project will require a match.
Yes.
So, sooner we get a cost estimate, we can figure out what our match would be.
Is it approved or is this?
What's that?
Do we, do we get this grant?
Uh, no, there's no guarantee, it's a source.
There's no guarantee.
And it, and, you know, frankly, the more you match the better, because drainage projects don't score as high sewer and water projects, so.
Okay.
We can throw some sewer in there. You told her enough?
Well, I only have three. Just go ahead and see. Alright, it looks like y'all unanimously chose IMS. So I'll give George and, uh, and you have one, you wanna go this afternoon, just let me know.
See if George is available.
Yeah, George available.
And, and we gotta go look at some, we gotta look at some out of that area close to the area anyway.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Alright.
We can go.
Alright, that's all I have.
Yeah, we will see y'all.
You're my subs-security hunter too. Alan Wagner up there?
President, yes, sir. Uh, I did do some research on the stewardship trust last week, you know, the reason to apply for, I did find that they have some of their meetings on YouTube. Um, and I did watch two of them, probably looks like June before they make a decision.
Oh, wow.
Looked really good until the last forty-eight hours and then a boatload of people decided to jump in. But I still feel good about it. Just based, listen, listening to those meetings and what they have, got a lot of requests, or not what they're looking for.
Yeah, I'd have heard a word from.
Yeah, yeah, so I was just gonna tell you, it'll probably be June.
Wow, that's long, huh?
There were two windows.
Not going anywhere.
There were two windows, you know, and, and it looks like they might not even open the same, if they didn't have. So.
It's not surprising.
Thank you for your help on that.
Yep, absolutely, meantime.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you say, Scott? Is he, is he here?
He was very appreciative of being selected. And that should be getting with you too about some.
I'm working on that.
In the mo departmental report.
Alright. Who on board y'all doing?
One.
Alright, my name is Sam, something Department Maintenance, uh, Maintenance Supervisor, and I was requesting, uh, for Google to hire, for them.
He wants to move, there's an employee that's in detention center that wants to come at the same cost over to the maintenance.
Do I have to pay for it?
You don't, because there's, the salary would remain the same.
Yeah, it's paid by the same, I got a case on my desk, I like to think of.
Is all we need for the minutes, the, the minutes got to reflect the move.
Yeah, the minutes have to reflect the move, but the salary is, the reason that sheet's on there is cause it states hourly and annual salary.
I understand, but I don't even know his name yet, we gotta.
Mr. President, uh, we got a way we do this.
Exactly.
And I don't think we need to deviate from the way we do this. And if we start doing it, then everybody gonna start coming up here doing the exact same thing. So Sam, they got a lit paperwork you need to fill out, it's no problem, just fit it out and we'll take it. And you might could go fit it out now before the meeting over with and bring it back and we'll, we'll take it.
I'll, I'll go report that.
Okay. Right now.
Yeah, thank, thank you Supervisor Gray, but yes, sir, I reiterate, he, he, uh, just kinda cut it off. I really would appreciate, if you can see how our meeting has been going smooth and everything that we do, not trying to make you look bad, it's gotta be recorded out minutes. So you know, when you, when we get people come in and they catch us off guard, we might not have the right self-record in a minute and that'll come back on us. So if you keep a paper tray and you bring what you need, uh, we can do it, no problem doing it, but we appreciate if we try to keep the order.
Okay.
Alright?
No worries.
Thank you.
Sam, I just hit Sam, so she should have a little sec.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, in the mo departmental report. Alright, any public comment?
Yes, good morning, board, I, I'm here as an observer. I really didn't, um, I really wasn't going to speak, but now that I'm here, I just wanted to thank the board and, uh, Mr. Dollar and Mr. Chapman and his crew for coming out to, uh, uh, not away trail and correcting that rain achievement that, uh, that needed, uh, correcting. Also, I would like to comment on the increase in garbage rate. There, there are some states, in order to generate revenue, they will explore other options. There, there are some states, in order to generate revenue, they will explore other options before, uh, increasing things such as, as the garbage rates. I think I spoke with you, Mr. Gray, years ago, um, regarding us, the rate increases that occur in welfare and Washington State, uh, regarding garbage. When garbage, when there are bags of garbage, extra bags that are set out, uh, are set outside of the regular garbage containers, residents gets charged for that. So, it would behoove the board in the future to explore some other options before considering increasing the garbage rates. And I, and I think, Mr. Gray, you told me that, because I said, well, if you've got extra garbage, you've got three bags of, of garbage, and you're charged for the extra, uh, you were saying, well, people won't do that, they'll throw their garbage in, in the ditch or whatever. But they also get fined for that, because it's, um, I, I guess it's called, when you throw your garbage away.
Littering?
Littering, and so there's a fine for that, and possibly jail time, but I, I'm just, and I just want the board to explore some of the options the next time, before increasing those rates, to see if you can generate revenue, uh, in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
It's, uh, Mr. Gray.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, since we don't have any garbage people in here, but, uh, they only pick up so much, and if you have more than they supposed to pick up, then they not gonna pick it up till the next time. They, they, they not gonna pick it up, so like, in the city, if I rack my leaves up, and put five garbage bags of leaves out, they gonna only pick up so much from my house, then next time, they'll pick the rest up. So, that's how, that's pretty much how it work around here.
Well, like I was saying, well, that should be, uh, considered, uh, an increase, I, I mean, say, if you've got three garbage bags, charge them three dollars per extra bag. Or if you have, um, I, I know, sometimes if you have an overflow of garbage in your garbage container, that is also considered an extra charge. So, I, I'm just throwing that out to see, that could be another option to explore in the future, rather than to just, uh, outright increase the rates, uh, or consider a property tax rate, uh, increases in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. We do, in the mo public, uh, comment. Can't be no more, uh, public comment, I'm gonna come to the table, supervisor Gray.
Well, we're not gonna speak on garbage, but since, since it's been, garbage is being talked about, uh, I've been here eight years, and, and my eight years, I can't recall an increase in garbage. And, uh, we done been through a pandemic, and every place I go, not only in Adams County, but everywhere else, you got an increase. And I just pulled up some from Baton Rouge, garbage collection fees increased to twelve fifty a month. And they say, not only is it gonna increase to twelve fifty, but it's gonna go up four percent every year, starting in two thousand and fourteen. Now, I made this comment a while back, with progressive communities like Madison and Ridge and all like that, they don't wait, uh, till something happen to raise taxes, they will get you a little bit every year. They add a little bit every year on, so they won't get caught up in trying to do it all at once, that's what those progressive communities do, they'll hit you a little bit, you don't even know they're gonna hit you, cuz it, it's not that much. But, we, we got insurance going up, they come in here and say they want four percent, and you look around, we paying over a hundred and some thousand dollars for insurance, and we gotta give our employees raises, I understand that. But, but to say garbage hasn't been raised, I don't know, did y'all raise it? So, garbage hasn't been raised, I might go on record saying fifteen years, so it's way overdue, and, and you gonna get what you pay for, but let me say this, and I'm gonna be dumb to garbage. And, uh, I know, uh, I heard supervisor and attorney mention about the bankruptcy and all this, so I took it on my own to go Google this company. And if you Google Metro, and it was all over the news, I didn't know, but if you Google it, and you read and listen to the news, what happened to these people? It was planned, it was orchestrated, and I'm gonna give you council member claims for level plan field for garbage collection. I guess they didn't support the incoming person, and they made it real, real hard for these people to pick up garbage, because they charged, they, they was picking up sixty, sixty thousand houses, but they supposed to picked up seventy, but they, seventy thousand, but they just got paid for sixty. So, they ate the other ten thousand, so how can you make it like that? But, not only, y'all, Mr. President, I'm gonna be through with this, but I, I, I just think Democrat and everybody else printing this news, they just need to go online and Google and read what I read, and it's disturbing for people to be unfair like it was in New Orleans. Ostrich contractor says administrator, administration orchestrated trash crisis. Go ahead and read it, and it'll tell you exactly what happened, and then, the last one, fair is fair. Something is rotten in New Orleans, but it ain't the garbage. Go read it, now moving on to my report. Did have a neighborhood watch meeting in, uh, one of my neighborhoods in Morgantown, I just wanna let the Democrat know, I'm real disappointed that there wasn't no article about Morgantown, because I'm bragging to the people out there, and I'm thinking it's in the, well, supervisor Gray, we ain't seen it in the newspaper, where is that? I don't know, so I checked the newspaper myself, and the biggest news in the history of this community dealing with Morgantown, we chose not to print it. I got a problem with that, something wrong with that. Uh, Ms. Brandon, could you please, uh, look at the budget, and make sure that we not going over in some of these departments? Cuz I know we doing a lot of this and a lot of this, but I just wanna make sure we not going over in these departments, and, uh, some people came up to my shop, it's just crazy, and fussing about two days a week. I don't wanna go to one day, I don't wanna go to one day, I'm just listening, I'm paying attention, and when they told me their address, they all live in the city. They live in the city on Linton and all that, they saying they, they don't even wanna go to once a week, they wanna keep twice a week. When I told them, you need to, you need to talk to the city, because we just dealing with the county. So, you got a lot of people back and forth one way or the other, that some want it, some don't, some areas need twice a week, cuz they got a lot of garbage, and they ain't got nowhere to put it. And I wanna wish, wish Ms. Page, uh, a happy birthday, she say she twenty-eight, what did she say, twenty? I'm just joking, but today is her birthday, and I wanna wish her a happy birthday, and last, uh. I just hope she stays in Mississippi, get it right, when it comes to this nonprofit, uh, department here plead guilty in welfare fraud. And that's the biggest, craziest thing I ever seen in my life, cuz I know individuals that get welfare, and if they go and do something wrong with a hundred dollars or less, they treat them like straight criminals, and these people done stole millions of dollars. Don't do it no more, we can't have two separate ways we deal with when people steal money. When you stealing, you stealing them, and I wanna congratulate the Ole Miss Rebel Women's Basketball Team, one of the biggest upsets in the history of basketball, they beat number one Stanford last night. And last, my sympathy goes out to the Kane family, the Lechit family, the Fitzgerald family, the Floyd family, the Washington family, the Johnson family, the KO family, and the Malone family, and, uh, the family of Mitchell, the young man that they found in the river. Now, I'll get chewed out, but that's what I do, I'm gonna say this again, at the end of the day, this is my opinion. It's a bad smell in Adams County, and it ain't coming from the garbage, that could be my report.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to check, uh, Scott and Ryan, to see if we have gotten any, uh, check on the labels and handles yet, have we received anything?
We were talking about sixty days.
About sixty days?
Money will come in.
Okay.
And we, we told AR to let us know as soon as they come in.
And I, and I just wanna say on that issue, um, I know a lot of people have been coming to me, uh, discussing their raises and what they're making to pay, and stuff like that, and I just spoke to supervisor Wilson a few minutes ago about the twelve dollars, um, that, that is a little, um, last forty-four weeks to make it, I don't see how they do it, and, uh, I was just hoping when that check come in, uh, it'll probably be around budget time anyway, that we can really, uh, move these people a little better, and they may at least be able to make a, a good wage.
A living wage.
A living wage, anyway. Okay, uh, another thing is, uh, I was looking at these applications for the county administrator, I know we need to go ahead and hurry up and do something in regards to that, um, I don't know if we had anyone that was qualified for these positions, I was going through them, but I know we did interview a lady, uh, before these applications, that was, um, seemed like she was pretty good and qualified for the position, and I don't feel like that we should be interviewing people that are not qualified for the position, and I know George would go through the applications and look at them, also determine whether there's anybody in the public or not, but that's something that we need to go ahead and start taking care of before budget time, so that person can come in and get, uh, affiliated to what's going on with county administrator position. Um, and maybe, uh, next meeting, we can go ahead or before then, have a special call meeting, and, uh, decide on the county administrator. The next thing I need to get, uh, approved travel to Jackson for March the thirty, uh, the NAS Board Directors meeting.
The proper move by supervisor Gray, dang it, second. The proper second by supervisor Wilson for travel, supervisor Hudson, uh, what day?
March the thirty.
March the thirty, alright, will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sound I, in a pause, may it have a saying right. Won't you care, continue.
Okay, I'd like to see John, he just wanted him to speak here, he must be, he's outside, okay, but make him come in and discuss that, I recall. The other thing, uh, we got a letter here, um, Judge Blackwell and Judge Drake, did you see this letter?
Actually, I didn't see it on Friday.
You saw it on Friday? What do we need to do about this, is anything we need to do?
What is that?
Uh, you should have one of this.
Some of that.
That's how, she don't play by.
Some of that.
Uh, yeah, and her courtroom.
Yeah. There, there's nothing that we can do about it, that's judicial, that's.
I think that was from Devon Flack, wasn't saying that there's nothing we can do, nobody can do about that.
Yes.
So, she, I, that's what I was wanting to say, that we need to do, and I'm gonna change. Okay.
Yes.
I mean, that's not, then, then we don't.
No, there's nothing we can do about that.
That's why, why they send it to us?
Yeah, and this, this judicial.
Yeah, well, they shouldn't, they shouldn't come down on me on without sending it to us. That's all I have.
Thank you, supervisor, yes, thank you, supervisor.
Uh, on March ninth, I received an email, Scott was on it, and Robbie was on it, from William McCurcher, um, wanting an update from JKS still on Robbins Lake Dam. Did you see that email? Uh, just so y'all know, it says, Mr. Slumber reaching out for an update on progress regarding Robbins Lake Dam, part of our meeting last October, MDEQ agreed to postpone enforcement actions until the end of February to allow the county's lawsuit to reach some form of resolution. Also, I shared the email thread from last fall, and Mr. Kaiser stated that he was going to look into finding the elevation data from the calls. To date, JKS has not provided the information, if JKS never provided the survey data to MDEQ or Adams County, MDEQ will need to have Adams County issue points for their question. I think the original deadline on this was, what's that, October or November? Um, we still have no answer from JKS. I, I've asked about it every time they've been in here, uh, Scott, where we need to be?
Hold tight, I'm working with JKS on something else, and, um, get that one meeting too. I've, I've been in talk, talking with Mr. McCurcher, I just understand the situation.
Mr. President, you said you talked to this guy?
Yes, sir, I talked to him.
Before he sent this out, or after he sent that?
After he sent it out, and before, I talked to him.
I'm just wanting to show, cuz I, I don't want us to get caught up in a situation where it look like we ain't doing nothing, and they reaching out to us, and we not responding or not doing nothing.
Yes, sir.
Alright, we don't trust you on this.
Yes.
And, and I know Scott's handling it, but I want the board to be aware of what's going on, because I've been asking these questions for months, and, uh, it just seems to be, like, it's trying to be avoided, and, uh, it's gonna come to a point where it can't be avoided anymore. And that's all I have.
Alright, supervisor Wilson.
Okay, um, first thing is, uh, because I've been getting so many calls about, uh, all accidents on Kingston Road, I've, um, I've asked Robbie to look into striping Kingston Road, and trying to get some markers on there, uh, the whole eight miles of Kingston Road, it is, I mean, it's just one wreck after another, and people say they can't see at night, and I, I agree, I drive that road all the time, so I don't have a price on that, but, uh, I'm, I'm sure that'll be for some. And when, when we talk about people making twelve dollars fifty cents an hour, that, that is very low wage, and it, and it bothers me to hear it, just like it bothers you, but the money coming in from the leaners and hangers is not gonna be sustainable, that'll be a one-time thing, so that's a problem. I've told, I've, I've mentioned this before, that the county does not have a revenue stream to speak of, even when a new corporation comes in, the first thing we do is wait the epalorum taxes for ten years, so we don't see any increase in epalorum taxes for ten years, most of the time, so, um, I don't, I don't know what the solution is to get, get salaries up, um, shorter raising taxes now. With that being said, we're gonna have to do that on this garbage contract, and I, cuz I don't know, we never answered that question the other day, how are you gonna pay for the garbage? Came up with a few things, but every one of them is basically another tax, you're gonna raise taxes, you can call it a fee, you can call it whatever you wanna call it. Um, I have some concerns about, um, what was done at the last meeting, as far as we did not negotiate, when we had two people at the table, um, and the reasoning was, according to Mr. Gray, that, uh, we did that before, and these people went bankrupt.
No, 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 y'all let them speak, okay. Y'all let them speak. Okay.
Please let them speak.
Well, that's basically what you said is, the last time we did a contract, we weren't here. But we made them renegotiate and then they ended up going bankrupt because they made a bad deal. Now, if I go on a car lot and buy, they say they want twelve thousand dollars for a used car, and I say, "I'm going to give you fourteen and don't even worry about the warranty," I'd be a fool. So if we make a deal and we don't get the best deal we can get, they know what their bottom end is, and they should know what their low end is. It's not our job to make their deal for them. Now, with that being said, Scott, you know who the attorney is for them?
Uh, that's not, as far as the contract's concerned, I've not tried to...
So you have not heard back from them since last, two weeks ago?
Since Thursday. I have talked to them before.
You submitted a contract to them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is the...
But I talked to them before that.
Is the new company registered in the state of Mississippi?
I can look that up.
And if so, where it meant that it registered?
Has not impacted the enforceability of a contract, but I will look that up.
I didn't know if you entered a contract where the company didn't exist.
It becomes a partnership. No, if your organization didn't properly register, that organization's a partnership. It's not going to be if you're that then or...
Okay, well, he was looking that up. And speaking with several other people about what we agreed to pay, we will now have the highest garbage rate in the state of Mississippi. Which seems kind of odd seeing we're one of the four counties in Mississippi. And we guarantee them a four-point-six percent rate increase yearly, no matter what is going on with the Consumer Price Index. That means if, sure, the prices have been rising for the last year, so people needed more wages and what have you, when that price index is going down. So we're still going to guarantee them a four-point-six percent rate every single year, no matter what, how bad. If we go into a recession or a depression, we're still going to have to pay that. Just for clarity, it's a really one-sided contract. We have no benefits whatsoever, no guarantees whatsoever. Did we even ask for a performance bond? If they fail to do their part of the contract, there should be a performance bond for about two million dollars to cover their failures. Otherwise, we're just like a cold in the bag, just like we were the last time they decided they went bankrupt. Now, with that said, the same people that went bankrupt, or the same people running this corporation or company, whatever it ends up being, LLC, whatever it is. So why would we think they'd be better at this time? In my opinion, we should have got out of contract with Greenway and let other people come in, like Waste Management, who could have done all this, probably twenty dollars per household. Not twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, or whatever it was. Now, I still think the one-day-a-week thing would have flew with those ninety-five gallon containers. A lot of people are saying they don't have the money to pay that extra. And I don't know with the county, I don't know where the county's going to get the money. Like I say, the difference between one-day pickup and two-days is six hundred thousand dollars a year right now. Now, that'll go up because we're going to give them a four-point-six percent raise on top of all this other. I just, I still can't believe we voted that contract in with zero negotiations. And I don't know if we can do anything about it. Scott, I don't know if you could tell me if we can do anything about that, but I think we... The other, my other question is, three or four of us sitting up here, actually, we have opponents in this race coming up. And why would we burden, this is a six-year contract, is that right? Six-year contract. Why would we burden supervisors that did not get a chance to vote on this, because some of us are replaced, with a contract that is so bad that people are actually laughing at us throughout the state? And I don't expect any answers to those questions, but I do want people to know my feelings on this and what I've researched on it. And on your point about Greenway, I mean, Metro, the only places they actually wanted to get rid of the contracts was New Orleans and Adams County.
Jones County.
Okay, and how many other places do they serve? Is that the only place they were serving?
Yeah, they had, I'd have to go pull the bankruptcies, see which ones they accepted as examples.
I just find that odd. That concludes my report.
Deputy Paige Dean. Chance Turf, Brandon Lewis.
I have a couple items. Need to have the April bond renewal spread across the minutes for Annabelle Wilson and Chachi Morgan, please.
You heard the request that a chance to turf can I get a motion? Then proper move by Supervisor Hudson, can I get a second?
Second.
Then proper second by Supervisor Mills. Are there any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried.
There were some funds remaining in the old tax collector account. They have to sit for a period of time. And then our auditor has advised us that we have to do a letter on, my letterhead notifying the board of this and making a request for the funds to be transferred to the general fund. So just need to make that transfer and spread this letter per state, excuse me, per our external auditor.
You heard the request that a chance to turf, can I get a motion? It's been proper moved by Supervisor Hutchins. And proper second by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." If any opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried. You're next.
Need to have the tax return settlement or February twenty-twenty-three spread across the minutes, please.
It's been proper moved by Supervisor Milton, proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right.
Received this documentation from Tim, I think he was here earlier. It's for a Mississippi Emergency Medical Services Operating Fund grant that they applied for or that we applied for. And just need to have the grant application spread across the minutes, please.
You heard the request that a chance to turf, can I get a motion? Then proper move by Supervisor Hutchins and proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right.
We just, Scott, you said we need to put this on the minutes or just note on the board that these two were paid off?
Yeah, just note they've been paid off still.
We had two bonds that were paid off. The dates of both bonds were September second, twenty-twenty, and the expiry date was March first, twenty-twenty-two on both of them. And just wanted to note it on the minutes that these two bonds were paid off and did receive the notification from First Security Bank.
You heard the request that a chance to turf, can I get a motion? It's been proper moved by Supervisor Hutchins. Can I get a second? Then proper second by Supervisor Milton. Will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right. She have "I," be determined. Turn, Scott Slow.
Y'all saw the two forms, the air fund loan repayment and transfer form and the statute of amendment form. That's the board to review.
You heard the request that a turn? Then proper move by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right. Motion carried. You're next. All right, well...
Can I add something to this?
Yes, sir.
Well, actually, what I want to do, I want to make a motion to reconsider the garbage contract and maybe renegotiate something because I really think Adams County is getting hosed in this deal. And that is the motion.
All right, you heard the motion of Supervisor Wilson, can I get a second?
I mean, it's, the contract's not, it's going to have to be brought and accrued before the board. And if you were a vote in the name of, I'm mistaken, Supervisor, it would be one of the people that voted "I" would ask for the reconsideration, ask for a re-vote. It'll come back before the board, if you're right.
All right.
Can't say I didn't try, folks.
All right. I want to come to the tape. I want to read for... I want to read something here from our road manager that he wanted us to be informed, uh, all of us to be aware of. He's out, that he's out, also the assistant road manager, Tim Kevin, that was back there. And he'll be out, but I want, he wanted me to announce that Constance Point and Thornberry Lake have been closed due to high water. And I think it went out in the public that Brad did a cold red. But we wanted to announce to the public that Constance Point and Thornberry was, uh, was closed. And he wanted permission from the board to get with the name, I mean, name Martin to advertise for striping on over that project.
He wanted the million price?
Actually, he must have meant the million price is still in Martin's. He wanted to ask for permission to, um, for request some striping projects, so I guess we need, can I get a motion?
Some move?
It's been proper moved by Supervisor... Uh, Gray and second by Supervisor Wilson for advertising striping over that project. All right, will there be any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right. He also wants permission from the board, participation in trucks on the Bluff event. It will be happening on April twenty-second from ten a.m. to two p.m. The road department was asked to send a truck, one of their new dump trucks, to the event. And he wanted to get approval to make sure that he can send a truck to the event. And I know, can I get a motion over? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins. And proper second by Supervisor Milton to send a truck to the event that they have on the Bluff.
This falls under that advertising of the possibilities of the community and whatnot.
Yeah, okay, uh, any discussion? If there'll be no discussion, all in favor, vote by you, sign a "I." Any opposed, may have the same right. All right, uh, on the two proctors at Southview, we have some pictures here. Tim Ratcliffe, uh, Ratcliffe, uh, he says they are putting posts down for the fence. The pictures have been taken of sixteen Southview in the front of the residence and around the back of the home, I'll pass this around when I finish. And he also said, um, he wrote by Group Two EWP, Camo and JKS, to see if any work has been done on the December twenty-second punch list. JKS and Hayden, who started with Camo, met Friday, March tenth on the site. Ohio eighty-four, number two and number three. Camo was supposed to start repairing these sites soon, but didn't, uh, they had not, did any work on, and they did not go back to look at Cemetery Road Site number ten and number twelve. Camo has not addressed the punch list items on Cemetery Road Site either. So I just, he just needs to do it a bit about, I don't see the pictures, excuse me.
I think he sent an email there.
Okay, he sent an email.
Did he?
We got an email.
Senator Roger Gray, did you check the email response about MDEQ on Southland?
I didn't.
We had heard that over MDEQ, they've given us a claim number, and they should be getting back to you.
You sent it to this?
Yes, sir. From you? Yes, sir. Give us a response to Robbie's update. Just let me know. We have reached out to MDEQ. They're very interested in it.
All right, Veteran Outreach, free chicken giveaway April seventh at Lewis Dunn and Sathron, three twenty-three Liberty Road. Time is ten a.m. until three p.m. Businesses will be on site. If you have any questions, you can call Veteran Service Office at six oh one three oh four seven eight hundred, that's seven eight zero zero, and you must have a military ID. Adams County Veteran Own. So I think if you put this in the box, they're talking about Veteran Affairs.
I'm going to send that R I D D to fourteen, right? If you don't have ID.
All right. But I think this has already been through the phone. This is equipment.
Mr. President, for the good of the order? For the good of the order, March thirtieth. Date set for my name.
Okay. All right, for the good of... Hold on, wait through here. Hold on. Yeah, um, so this is just... All right, I have, um, this is from, I guess, Alan Larry. We had the two homes that, uh, that have been replaced, the manufactured homes, the grant from Alan Larry. I just need permission to sign. Can I get a motion?
Some of it.
Then proper move by Supervisor Hutchins, can I get a second? Then proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Any discussion? If there'll be no...
Do you follow the homes that this? The homes?
Mississippi Home Corporation. This is two homes that didn't have... They don't have them in this boardroom. They don't have them on here. Yeah, they don't have. I'll give them this to them, make sure we get them. See, but we don't have them, okay. Two homes replaced. It just said, it says two homes replaced and the replacement of three manufactured homes. They don't have anything. It's all about, no location. And I think, well, obviously, this has been approved. We already approved a resolution for, uh, Ms. Ruben Ashbaugh and, uh, Mr. William Abraham Dawes. So we approve them, so all they need to be signed. I think we had an idea to select, we brought this up a few weeks ago. The leadership application to the Chamber of Commerce, Tuition seven hundred bucks. We have, uh, we need somebody to, uh, be selected. Class of twenty-four and three tuition.
Has it started already? Did that start?
I don't know. It doesn't have, um, it don't have the date on there, but I know...
You need to find out if it started already, because...
Mr. Morris, class two thousand twenty-three graduation, a month and a half.
Now, we may miss out on this time.
I thought you gave a hundred dollars or something not too long ago.
Scott's show.
Did anybody else give?
Yeah, by all means.
I don't remember.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Because I never bring my wallet in here.
I have approval for travel. Purpose is to, uh, N O B C Q Conference, James Richard Gray and Supervisor, uh, Anna Hutchins to Miami, Florida, I need, it's been approved.
Y'all want to Miami Beach?
Yep. Can you borrow your, uh, house?
Mine's not down there.
All right, y'all. Alright, so, it's been approved. We just did the board direction, yeah, we just approved, that's gotta prove. And, cause already been approved for the, the conference, April also. Already been approved, so just make it be signed. Now we get back over to these new hires. Had a bunch of, so now we get back over here, it has been checked out with Mary Kay has come back. The administrative assistant over there, Chris Stewart, hourly rate fourteen dollars and eighty-four cent, can I get a motion? That's next door. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, can I get a second? Second by Supervisor Wilson, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you can sign an eye. We got, also we have Bernard Banks at twelve dollars and fifty-seven cents, we just heard. Would you not attention, we also have James Evans at, he's a new hire for twelve dollars. And we have Jakari Winston. Alright, so we had those three Christian, we already had most of Bernard Banks at twelve fifty-seven. And James Evans at twelve dollars, all this is for youth court downstairs, can I get a motion to approve?
A move?
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion? All in favor vote by you can sign an eye. If there's any opposed, may he have the same right. Motion carried, you now. Is the best thing I've really get back up? We'll get back up. We do have paperwork on Mrs. Jakari Winston. Now I need a motion, hourly rate clear out of the aisle, and he's moving from juvenile detention to the main beside. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Proper second by Supervisor Milton. Any discussion? All in favor vote by you can sign an eye. And if opposed, may he have the same right.
Alright, thank you.
Alright. Alright, well. No, he already, well, he waiting on, he got, we got to look at that side. Yeah.
His recognition was tried.
Alright, come, come on, you can come over there.
We looked over this, verified that the low bidder from earlier's bid opening quest, AP oh one nine oh M, Lane Line LLC. About two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six cents. Who like recommend awarding that property, AP oh one nine oh M to Lane Line LLC.
You heard the request of the engineer, can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, proper second by Supervisor Wilson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you can sign an eye. And if opposed, may he have the same right, motion carried, you now.
Now, during that project, there were, fortunately, the project was considered nonparticipative. So therefore, before the project is actually officially funded by state aid, the time they look after submit, since state aid is checking out, six nine thousand, four hundred dollars for the nonparticipating portion of the project.
You heard the request of the engineer, hey, you got that, how much? Sixty-nine thousand, what?
Four hundred dollars.
Sixty-nine thousand, four hundred. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, proper second by Supervisor Gray. Would there be any discussion? All in favor vote by you can sign an eye. And if opposed, may he have the same right.
Alright, does that approval allow the board president to sign?
Yeah, was that amount, we knew that amount before the bid, right?
The aggregate bid price was two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-six.
I was talking about the sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars, that was already set.
Was this more than original because they found a way or they're unparticipating in the project?
What was the original?
I have to go back and look at the original.
Okay, did any legal review, go ahead.
Alright. Anything else?
Yeah.
And any legal review? All in favor vote?
And one thing I forgot to mention also, we did, the board from state aid saying that those two projects that have been submitted for the program were officially funded. Said money has been reverted back to you also.
Alright. Thank you. But I, I would also, I'd just like to. Say it is election year. And it's always gonna be a little tougher in election year when it come. I mean, it's just gonna be in God's will who be here at, at these things because we all take a job at the wheel of the people. Our job is at the wheel of the people, anywhere it go. So, you know, we, we just try to do the best we can in making votes. And one of the things that I do see in Adams County, you know, I don't always like to get into this, I try to be quiet on a lot. A lot of things is always you hear one side of the story. And I see it's a lot of, both sides of the story is not always on the table, on, on, not all issues. And it is not just here in Adams County Boardroom, but it's all over the world. You know, everywhere you go over the world, all bad news is good news. But I just think as we sit here, at the board. Is always something that come up, I can promise you, I, I seen more, heard more. But we all should still try to make our professional decisions, and they're not gonna all be the same. But we all try to stay in respect and not let, try to do a lot of this arguing, and if we can, that's why I had two rough meetings started out. And I don't ever want a meeting like that because it's totally disgraceful. And I want everybody to be able to express their feelings, but when we expressed our feelings, I, I would just say that each and every one of my board members. If we can just stay in respect of one another. Because we know that things are not gonna be all in each other's favor because we come from different backgrounds. But that gives nobody at this table, including me and nobody else, to disrespect or drag anybody through the mud or anybody's name. Cause we sit here as professionals that represent all these constituents in Adams County. And so. I look at the brighter side of the picture. As you do come to election. I know stuff don't get printed, stuff don't get seen, but if you look at our board. Backing up forty years, this board with the diversity that we have in it, we have got more accomplished than any other board. In the, in the, in the recent years, we, we, we upgraded recreation all throughout our county. Not just the baseball field, which was a great thing, an idea, we upgraded that, we upgraded each county park. The sheriff just talked about Project Nola, that we making our county safer. We in negotiations for our airport, has not been flight over forty years, we're working on our airport. We couldn't get all our roads done, but look at what we did, we did an eight million dollar road bomb. We on the key to get Ninety-Six Streets back. We worked on economic development, economic development, we had a big problem with having workforce. The first time we got together, the county city and the school board, and we come together, had a workforce director. We are working toward making leaps and stride for to make Adams County better. So I would just say to us, for the good of the order, let's not, even though we have some bad, some differences in the team. Let's not forget the great work that we have done together. And that'll be all, that'll conclude my report. Go ahead.
I need to speak for what I said, because, excuse me, I don't want the Democrat to print something that somebody else said that I said. Listen, what I said was, we negotiated with trash. Metro won the trash bid last time. Some of the supervisors wanted to negotiate with two companies. We brought back, brought them back to the table and we negotiated, Metro won it again. In the process of Metro winning the contract. The pandemic hit. And, and when the pandemic hit, other communities, I know in Louisiana, I don't know about Mississippi. But had money in the AARP for trash people. But what happened to them? They had money in it for them, but they didn't get no money from Mississippi. I don't know how it was in Mississippi. Only thing I said was, they was upside down because of the pandemic. I didn't know nothing about them filing bankrupts at the time, so I did not say they filed bankrupt because of that. That's what I said, but I only, I'm gonna say this. Metro came into this county when Waste Pro quit on us. They have gardens all over this county, they didn't even carry out their duties. They stopped and said they weren't gonna pick up no more trash. For two whole weeks, renegotiated with Metro to come on early to help us clean up this county. Cause Waste Pro wouldn't pick up no more trash. And I lied. Okay, so what I'm saying is this. Yep, their trucks broke down, which you have problems, they filed bankrupts. What I'm saying is this, in the process of doing all that, we put out an emergency bid. Nobody wanted to bid on the emergency bid, they came in and bid it low just to help Adams County out. They bid it a low bid, which was nineteen dollars a whatever, a, a, a month. Then when we put out the R R Ps, some of these same people, they wouldn't even bid on the contract. For us, I know two people bid, which was them with the change of name in Allen. This is what I'm saying. This board, I went back and reviewed our last meeting, this board agreed to two days a week. And what I'm saying is this, and I ain't trying to be controversial or nothing like this, this board agreed to two days a week. It wasn't, it wasn't until Allen came in here, a meeting before the meeting. And wanted to know, wanted to talk about one day a week. And it was, I ain't gonna say illegal, but it was out of order because the attorney had to cut them off and tell them that they was out of order. Now, if you a company that been in business that long, you should know the rules. And they was out of order trying to negotiate when the other people wasn't even here, that ain't the way you do business. And then the Democrats sit up there and say, me and Supervisor Hutchinson wouldn't even allow. This board to talk about one day a week, that's a lie. Once they made a motion and a second, we had a discussion like we always do. That's the way government go. So when you print, please get it correct, cause you lied on me. I can't speak with President Hutchins, but you told a lie, so this time, get it right. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Please, if y'all would go and respond.
The reason most of the people wouldn't bid on an emergency order is you can't buy new trucks and hire people for a three-month contract agreement. And what you actually said was not the past board meetings, it was the board meeting before that. And the other thing is, we had people sitting there, we could have agreed to both contracts and negotiated with both, both of them. And we could have got the price down significantly, but we didn't even try. That is what's got me upset, and that's what's got the public upset about it. They're gonna have to pay for it in the end, our bad decisions.
Alright. If there'll be no more, I have a couple, can I get a motion for close termination?
I just want to ask each supervisor to pick two of the high school students from the age of sixteen to twenty-one for the summer work program.
Alright.
They don't start in May, at the end of May.
Alright, can I get a motion for close termination? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray. It's been proper second by Supervisor Hutchins. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by you can sign an eye. And if opposed, may he have the same right, close termination.